8188, the Rutland Renewable Energy Cold River Solar Project to be proposed for a location in the town of Rutland. I'm Mark Sinclair, I'm with the Public Service Board. The Board has appointed me to be a hearing officer in this proceeding. With me is John Gerhard, far right, an attorney with the Board who will be assisting me in this case. And to my direct right is David Watts, an engineer with the Public Service Board. The purpose of the hearing is to provide an opportunity to hear input regarding the Rutland Renewable Energy Cold River Solar Project. As background to the public hearing, let me explain that in order to construct any generation facility in Vermont, an applicant needs to get a certificate of public good that approves a project from the Public Service Board. The Board has three members, three commissioners, who make the final decisions. However, in the majority of cases, the Board delegates the proceeding to staff, a hearing officer, to implement the public and technical hearings and to write proposed decisions based on the facts and the law. However, the final decision is actually made by the three member of the Board. Now to the purpose and format of this hearing, there's a handout up front here that provides more information about this hearing and other ways you can provide input to the Board on the petition, including an email and physical address to write to the Board. Again, if you want to comment tonight, make a public comment, sign up on the handout, the signup handout sheet. Also, tonight's public hearing will be transcribed by a court reporter. This transcript, along with all other comments received by the Board, become part of the case's public file so that the Board member, staff, and the participants in the case can consider the comments. When you're making public comments, please identify yourself for the court reporter. I also want to stress that although these public comments are made part of the public file in the docket, they are not part of the evidentiary record. Under Vermont law, the Board's decision in this case can only rely on formal testimony and exhibits from parties who intervened in the case, and that the exhibits and testimony have been accepted into the evidentiary record. But public comments are very helpful in raising issues or perspectives that the Board should consider, and these comments are often the basis for questions that arise and that we will raise with parties during the evidentiary hearing that will take place. This is also not the only forum for public input. We welcome letters and emails, and there are information sheets up here that give you the address and email of the clerk of the Board. Also want to just explain that we do not have a complete schedule set for this case yet. In other words, we do not know when we will issue a decision. There's no deadline yet established for filing testimony by interveners and stadia stations. We also don't know when we're going to have a technical hearing. We do know this, we're going to have a site visit scheduled for April 18th at 1:00 in the afternoon, and then there'll be a status conference among the parties who are intervening in the case on May 20th to determine the full schedule for the case going forward. Also, you may decide to become a formal party to the case if you need certain criteria to obtain intervenor status. For example, the town of Rutland is an intervener in the case, as are some adjoining property owners. Interveners have the same rights as other formal parties, and they can provide testimony and participate in the evidentiary hearings, and they're subject to the rules regarding discovery and cause examination. In order to intervene, you will need to file a motion to intervene by April 2nd, a week from today, with the Board and the existing parties, explaining the nature of the interest which may be affected by the outcome of the proceeding. And there's guidance on how to make your case for having a significant interest in this proceeding in a handout up front here. Or you can go to the Board's website, and there's a citizen's guide to participation for the Board. I want to ask folks a question before we begin the public comments. We have representatives here from the applicant Rutland Renewable Resources and from the Department of Public Service. We could have the petitioner make a few opening comments to describe the attributes of the project, not to get into the merits of the project, but just to explain what it is, if folks in the room here want that. If not, we'll go directly to public comments. Can I get a show of hands of those who would favor hearing from the applicant for a short summary of the project? Does anybody strongly object? Okay, then I'm going to give the petitioner about five minutes to just describe the project. Before I do that, however, I also want to point out that we have a representative from the Department of Public Service, Aaron Kosicki. Probably butchered your last sentence. And I want to give Aaron a second just to explain what the Department of Public Service's role is in this proceeding. Thanks, Aaron.
Hi, I'm Aaron Kosicki. I'm a staff attorney with the Department of Public Service. The Department advocates on behalf of ratepayers in the state. We're a statutory party to all proceedings before the Public Service Board, along with the Agency of Natural Resources and a number of other agencies. In this particular proceeding, we're a party, along with the interveners that have already been granted intervention status, as well as A and R. I think I echo a lot of what Mr. Sinclair said, which is, as the public advocate, we find comments that are gathered here to be very helpful to us, and it helps us see issues that maybe we wouldn't have seen before, and helps us sort of form questions to the petitioner when we get to the technical hearing stage later on in the proceeding. And if anybody is considering intervention, or has just questions or comments about the project after this session here, feel free to contact me. You can find my contact information on the Department of Public Service website. I say, feel free to use this as a resource, and we can help as best we can.
Thanks, Aaron. Now, we'll turn to a representative from the Rutland Renewable Energy Corporation to just explain the basic characteristics of the proposed facility.
Thank you. So my name is Rod Biantz, a resident of Rutland Renewable Energy, otherwise known as Resource Options. Thank you for coming out, and the Public Service Board appreciates your feedback and comments for the project. As most of you know, we chose this site, Cold River Road site. It is a designated industrial site in the town of Rutland. One of our abutters is the Cold River Road Industrial Park, and just up the road from our project is a recycling center, Hubbard Recycling Center for commercial and industrial use. So, we know that going into this project, that Rutland Economic Development Corporation marketed this site for many, many years for industrial use. So, we thought it was a good choice when we picked the site. We feel that, given what else could be at this project, I'm sorry, what else could be at this site, we feel that the project has very minimal impact compared to a distribution facility, or a warehouse, or the like. We have worked with state departments to provide setbacks from the wetlands on the western portion of the site, and also we have a setback, 50, I'm sorry, 60-foot setback from the road. We've worked with the town of Rutland. We first brought this site to Joe Zangalli, the town administrator. The first thing he said was, "Please pull back the project from the intersection." We have done that. You'll see from the site plan that we actually pulled back from that intersection. So, you know, we've worked with the state departments, we've worked with regional and local departments as well. We plan to aesthetically mitigate the view shown for this project. As you can see, we have some flowering crabapple, crabapple trees and the like, and we have shrubbery running up the north side. So, you know, we're very sensitive to the aesthetics of the project, and we're willing to work with the PSP and the neighbors in minimizing the visual aspect of this project.
Great. Thank you very much. So, let's get to public comments. I've already received some written public comments, which we will take a careful look at in addition to what we have here tonight. The first person on my list is Philip Allen. Can I, you want to go ahead and?
Sure. Mr. Jonesen, my name is Philip Allen. I'm a resident of Rutland Town, and I'm a co-owner of two businesses, in Rutland City, same son of Vermont, and same son of Choice. I really appreciate the representatives from the Public Service Board coming here, because as someone who builds solar arrays, I want everybody in my community to know, there's a lot of hoops we have to jump through. Very briefly, the Public Service Board, the Department of Public Service, the utility companies, in our case, Green Mountain Power, historic preservation organizations, the list really goes on and on, including Act 250, Act 248. My point is that the state itself is handling solar installation very, very well. I think philosophically, a lot of us, including me, really like the idea of local control, the idea of federal government, state government, local government. If I'm given a choice theoretically, I'll pick as local as I can get. But what I've found attending these meetings in this situation, is why I don't think local works in a case like this, is that there's really always going to be three or four people who don't want something to happen. When we apply to go solar, we apply for a certificate of public good. I don't know that there's a better phrase than that. Something like this is going to provide 3 million kilowatt-hours a year of power, local power to us. It's jobs, it's money, it's clean renewable energy, it's the public good. But there's some people in the public who aren't going to like it. If we allow that to happen, particularly in an industrial site like this, we're really saying, in the state of Vermont, you really can't do anything. So, in this particular case, I think we should leave it up to the Public Service Board, definitely listen to comments from any community. But turning a project like this away from Rutland Town, Rutland City, the general Rutland community, is a terrible signal to send to the country. If you're a reader of the Rutland Herald, as I am, it seems that we have two choices right now. We can be the solar capital of New England, or the Heraldic capital of the England. I pick the solar capital. That's all I'm going to say, because I know there's a lot of speakers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker on my list is Jeffrey Leonard.
Leonard?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeff Leonard. I'm a 54-year resident of Rutland Town. I have my own business here that I've run for 30 years, Green Mountain Power Treatment. And I'll start off by saying, I don't have any problem with solar. I work at Minnie House with a solar. It's a great, great thing. But, Ray, look at this project. I go by here every day from work down to where I buy a lot of my supplies, and it's just, it seems like it's just way over the top for where this place is. It's infringing on neighbors. I just can't imagine seeing how 9,000 panels out in this field, and, you know, being, you know, when all these neighbors are, you know, fighting it, and it's going to take their land values down one way or the other. Yeah, it's good for things, but, you know, it just seems like there's better places where you, in Vermont, where you can put these and hide them so that everybody doesn't have to see them. I mean, you're not going to, trees are not going to hide these things, no matter what you do, you can put up. But it just seems too much to me, and I think they need to find, you know, I'm all for it, but find better places where everybody doesn't have to see it, and where it's upsetting a lot of people. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next on the list is David Fushy.
Fushy.
Fushy, thank you. Go ahead.
So, yeah, I just put a little something here together, so. Everyone is gathered here tonight because they have convictions or concerns, one way or another, about what is going to be happening in our town regarding solar farms. Some may be here because they feel solar is the answer for our future, some because they feel there is a responsible place for it to be installed, and some are just here for monetary gains. As a third-generation Vermonter and lifelong resident of this area, I am very concerned about what is happening, not only in our area, but the entire state. What attracts many to our region is the scenic beauty of our backcountry roads, which I believe is some of the best this country has to offer. If we continue on this path of installing these large-scale solar farms everywhere and anywhere, there is available open land, that beauty will soon be lost. First and foremost, I am not anti-solar, but I do feel there's a place for it with careful planning and thought. If my information is correct, the Public Service Board has not denied one single solar farm to date, so the message they are sending to developers is that you can put it anywhere, and I mean anywhere. I don't think anyone in this room can say that every site is going to be acceptable. Section 248 of the Title 30 of the Vermont Statute, the law that was enacted to oversee this process, can't be working if no sites have ever been denied. With the amount of open land that we have in this state, these solar farms should be placed with the least amount of impact on our residents. A perfect example is the 500-plus acre parcel, which was a former gravel pit, that is for sale within a half-mile of this site. The largest solar farm in this country could be constructed there, and I don't think one person in this room would object to this site. These and other like sites are where they should be placed. I also know the comparison has been made many times between having a billboard law in this state and solar panel construction. We can't put up a billboard for aesthetic reasons, but yet we can put up thousands of panels anywhere, and we have no say. Another good comparison would be between satellite dishes of the past to current technology. 20 years ago, satellite dishes in your rear yard were the size of a small truck. Today, they're the size of a dinner plate. With the way technology is advancing, in five years, you will probably be able to go to your local Home Depot or supply place and purchase a portable solar generation system, pop it up in your backyard, and generate enough power to supply your home. Another issue to take into consideration is installing these farms, these solar farms, on land which could be used for other options in the future. As we all know, the economy currently is not that healthy, but in, let's say, in five to 10 years, if the economy turns around, and we have used up all our vacant land on these solar farms, what will we have left for future development? What else really concerns me about this site is that it's being purchased by the developer and not leased. Grow Solar states that at the end of their contract of 25 years, the site will return to its former state. But as being an owner, what is going to stop them from just replacing the panels with additional panels, and the community will be ending up with a perpetual site? This site is at the floor of a small valley, completely surrounded by residential properties, and only residential properties, that look directly onto the site. No amount of screening will eliminate or even soften these views. I would urge all who are present here tonight in favor of solar projects in general to visit this site before making judgment about whether this project should be permitted. I am confident that you wouldn't want it in your front yard either. With the current system of little or no oversight or master planning for these projects, the rush is on to build as many as developers can, anywhere they can. What I think needs to happen is to have a more comprehensive oversight of the entire solar farm industry as a whole. I think the path that the town has started on, to try and send a message to those in control, to slow down and take in consideration legitimate concerns we have about the future direction we should be taking in regards to solar development. In closing, I would like to point out that one of the criteria the Public Service Board must be informing their decision on this project is that it is for the public good. With that in mind, I am submitting the signatures of over 400 local citizens who feel that this site is absolutely the wrong location for a project of this magnitude. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person on the list to comment is Pat Hunter.
So, we're just exchanging spots, because I got to move on. My name's Paul Gallo. I'm a resident of the Rutland Town and a businessperson in the community. I got three topics that I want to talk about. First, the town process. We went to the planning committee, and they worked with it, they sent it what I thought to be a product to the select board, and I thought it was supposed to go back to the planning board for, you know, changes, and then approved by the select, the select board. I think over the last two months, we've moved way too fast on this thing. I think that it's not a comprehensive plan. I think it was thrown together so fast, and we're talking about a community that's struggled with zoning. We've kicked the can for 30 or 40 years on zoning. It's, you know, we spent all this money on zoning, and now all of a sudden, we want to put all kinds of energy, town energy, and legal fees into this process. And I think it's an embarrassment to the resident taxpayers that we are rushing this thing. Secondly, I will tell you that the location is an industrial site. The Rutland Regional Medical Center is right on that road. I think it's the largest employer in this community. That's a main artery for a lot of people to get to work. Hubbard's recycling facility is there, El Nicky Sand and Gravel, I know it, it's a live pit. It has 7 million yards of gravel. It's not going to be a solar park. He's not trying to sell it for someone to put solar in it. It has live aggregate, which are very hard to establish in this state. You have Carreras concrete. So, I mean, this is industrial. The folks that live in that neighborhood had to know this was an industrial site, and a hard-working family like the Hubbard's live up the road. If he decided that he wanted to, you know, use that facility to expand his footprint, then he could have done that. I mean, that's, you know, this is a hard-working family that's done very well. This is an industrial site, so I believe that solar is probably your best neighbor, really. And my last comment is, you know, this is, I have no skin in the game, but I will tell you, I am committed to branding Rutland for the future. There's, you know, this, this whole solar movement, I think it attracts jobs, I think it retains our youth. There's no youth in here to speak. It's really troublesome, because that's where the jobs are. You want to have our children come back here. We're making decisions in this room for the next two generations, and they're not even represented here. So, I think the solar industry is getting a black eye, and I don't, I don't think it's fair. If you're going to fight over a setback, that just doesn't hold any water. These folks bought the property, it's a quiet neighbor, there's no trucks, there's no road infrastructure, there's no noise. I just, that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you very much. Now, Pat Hunter, do you want to speak next?
I'll pass.
Okay. Next on my list is Suzanne Ellis Leonard.
Suzanne Ellis Leonard.
I'm sorry.
I'm a resident of Rutland Town, and I also work in the community in real estate. And I was in my office looking through some documents, and I found the Vermont Property Owners Report. This is dated February through March 2014. And in here is a special report, why do out-of-staters choose to move to or buy property in Vermont? And it's written by Kim Gifford, and she just wrote a little editorial note here. We often hear about reasons potential buyers could be deferred for purchasing property in Vermont. High property taxes, high income, and estate taxes for the wealthy, limited job opportunities, and long winters. For a change, we thought it would be interesting to consider what factors attract those buyers who actually do choose Vermont. So, she, she talked to a few, a number of real estate brokers, and real estate brokers do have a lot of contact with potential buyers from out of state than anybody else, and she recounts some of the reasons here. I'm not going to read this whole report, won't do that to you, but I would like to just read the first paragraph, why people choose Vermont. Majestic and forested mountains, winding ski trails, sparkling blue lakes, historic farmhouses and villages, rolling pastures, pleasing images like these seem to top the lists of reasons why out-of-staters purchase property in Vermont. The state's beauty. And I just would like to leave it at that.
Thank you very much. Next on my list is Jerry Hanson.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Jerry Hanson, and I'll disclose I'm also on the board of directors for the Economic Development Corporation, but I'm also a Rutland Town resident, so I'm speaking on behalf as an individual. One of the things I have to say is that I'm a proponent of alternative energy. I think that any discipline that we talk about has to be a good neighbor, and strategically placed so it doesn't interfere with the environment, or with neighbors and abutters. I have to compliment the initiative that Green Mountain Power has taken. It's actually put Vermont and Rutland specifically on the map. We're dealing with companies now that are not just national, but international, and they're looking at Rutland as to what we can do, because my primary concern is lack of jobs. You know, we need to have some industry here, we need to have places for our children to go to and so forth, and to retain them in this area so that the scape can continue to grow. So, I'm just going to say that I think it's a good opportunity to build on the initiative that Green Mountain Power has put together. It is attracting attention, which is what we need to do, if we're going to be attracting businesses, and the quality of life that we offer here, as she solemnly said. We need to maintain that. On the other side of the coin, there's always going to be people who are not satisfied, I'm just echoing what somebody else said, but the fact is, that property is not zoned, but stated to be industrial classification. And for that reason, okay, you shouldn't be restricting anybody from developing it that could have a 10,000 or 15,000 square foot building on it, 34 feet tall, trucks coming day and night, 24/7, and that would be much more influential in the community, okay, and the neighbors, than kind of an inert type of environment such as a solar farm. The one thing I would ask the solar people is to make sure that they put a good adequate buffer zone in. And I'm not talking about deciduous trees and so forth, but a good green buffer. And 60 feet is more than enough. The example I can give is going up North Grove Street where the country club is. There's just one row of trees there. But if you didn't know there was a country club on the other side of that until you got to the first hole, or the clubhouse, you don't need to have a certain amount of depth. If you have one piece of paper, you can't see through it, putting 40 behind it doesn't diminish the look at all. So, we just need to be careful, and I encourage the development, because it does create jobs and adds to the tax base, but I also ask the solar people to be good neighbors and do everything they can to mitigate the impact on the abutters. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up to speak is Howard Burgess.
Good evening. I'm a Lister, and a resident of the town of Rutland. I've been a Lister for 20 years. I'm actually a full-time Lister, and I work full-time throughout the week. My purpose here is to talk about what you heard a lot about tonight, is the designation of this industrial site. Since my time in office, we've done three full-townwide reappraisals. We did one in 1998 by Vermont Appraisal System out of Plainfield, and 2009, Wright Appraisal Company out of West Rutland, and last year, we did one with Rich Lewis out of Berry. In each of these three instances, the highest and best use of this property was rated as residential. It really, it really is a residential neighborhood, and this, it got put on the map as industrial, and this is what's showing everybody that it's an industrial site. Back in the 1990s, when a questionnaire was sent around town, when they were looking, they had a stabilization program, and they sent notices out to all the large landowners and asked them, you know, "Do you want to get in a stabilization plan, and what would you like your land designated as?" A lot of stuff came back in, and by choice, and unfortunately, the planning commission, or the town, hasn't put this back where it belongs. We're now doing an update on the town plan, and we have several areas that are really out of place, and this certainly is one of them. It's a good half a mile or so to get to any of the utilities, the water and sewer lines, and it's residential all around it. It's what it is. You drive down there, you'll see it. I just wanted to contribute that with my experience with the town.
Thank you. Next to speak is Norman Cohen.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Norman Cohen. I live in Rutland Town. I live about two and a half miles from this project, so I have no immediate stake in it, per se. I think it's the right project. I think it's in the I think it's in the wrong place. I'm encouraged that you'll pay, paying a site visit in, in April. And I assume, is it this group that will be paying the site visit? You three gentlemen?
Yes, I believe so. Yes.
As you come down from Montpelier and you come east on Route 4, you'll pass two solar installations that I think demonstrate good sighting and poor sighting. The first one is behind the McDonald's plant on your right, on your north as you're coming down. You can hardly, you hardly know it's there. The paddles are, are huge. I walk over there because I live in that neighborhood on the far north tip where there's a little sliver of Rutland Town. The other one is on the north side of Hillside Drive, which is probably less than 100 yards, maybe 200 yards from that, right across the street from Pizza Hut. If you go to Pizza Hut, you've gone too far. That's poor sighting in my view. I have to lie by that and my neighbors have to lie by that every day when they go to work or they come home from work. It's obnoxious. It's not prudent. It, it's a blight on the landscape. When Green Mountain Power purchased CV and, and dealt with our local people coming down and discussed and tried to accommodate the economic impact, they represented that they would make Rutland the solar capital of the state of Vermont. I'm not sure very many of us understood that projects like this were in the offing. There are smaller projects around the city, around other parts of the community, uh, which aren't as intrusive. Uh, this is a beautiful area. I bike there, I drive by there three times a week when I go to the southern part of the town and as it's a bypass and, uh, I don't want my views spoiled anymore. So I ask you to pay attention, if you will, to the two, one just off of Woodstock Avenue. Perhaps you folks were involved in them. One, as I said, I think is quite appropriate, but the other, I disagree with you. Thank you very much for your time.
I'd just point out that John and I are new to the board, so we didn't have any, we have no experience.
I'm sorry.
Or, we're, we're new to the board, both of us, so we're at staff, so we had no involvement in those things.
So you can see the sins of your forefathers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next person on my list is Jim Snead.
Snead. Um, good evening. Uh, my name is Jim Snead and I'm a resident of Rutland Town. I am not an immediate neighbor of this site. So my opinion probably doesn't count as much as the surrounding neighbors. But I do want to say that I am a strong proponent of solar. Now, I also believe it had, should have, um, there should be citing requirements, setback requirements, screening requirements, neighborhood requirements, and also topographical kinds of requirements. I'm also here to tell you, I'm not knowledgeable enough to know what all those things should be, but I can guess that they probably should be variable depending upon what all those characteristics are. So I'd like to ask the board to, to give that due consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up would be Charlie Flanders.
Yes. I'm under leave, I'm out. Sorry. Okay. I live directly across from this proposed solar. I've lived there since early seventies and purchased the old farmhouse, okay?
You can speak up a little bit for the recorder. That would be great.
Anyway, because we live in the old farmhouse opposite in full view, north, south and west of the proposed solar orchard, we and Vermont for Responsible Solar have concerns as follows. The placement of the solar, setbacks, solar reflections, maintenance for panels, fencing, trees, shrubs and landscape. This area should be completely fenced due to the wetlands and deer yard. There's many, many deer. I've had as many as 25 deer coming down on my way. So there's going to be a lot that will eat all the shrubber unless it's fenced properly. I even had to replace my shrubs. I probably replaced 50 shrubs. They were very old and I had to wrap year after year. Finally put Alberta spruce in so I wouldn't have to do that, just recently. The other thing is employees for the maintenance for all solar in Rutland County. How many homes will benefit from 9,000 plus panels? How soon and how much per kilowatt hour will be the savings? Lastly, for the homeowner, assessment and resale appraisal are a big concern. Like I said, I've lived there since the early seventies. I grew up in that neighborhood. I went to school here. So you see, I'm old. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up would be Peter Welch.
Hi, Peter Welch. I'm going to defer to the questioning and put in writing, but you made a comment that kind of striking to me. There was a reference to a couple of solar farms that were in our community already and you didn't seem to be aware of either of them. Um, I agree with Mr. Cohen. One of them is a junkyard in our neighborhood and the other one is a nice presentation. And I think that you would do well to look at them all and it would be nice to see some consistency for those who are, are presenting each of these projects so you know exactly where we came from and how we got there.
Thank you. Uh, next would be Ted Hopper Senior.
Junior.
Junior, sorry. No, no slight intended.
Um, I've got two hands on this. I'm a business owner up the street from the project. I have 25 employees. We do about 20,000 ton of trash a year and recyclables and most of our trash goes to an incinerator. So I'm into the, you know, renewable energy, you know, and, and it's fine. And on the other hand is I own 300 acres bordering the property and it's a farm that we've owned for four generations. I've raised the fifth. The fifth has started at six. We've been there for a long time and I just think there's another spot for this facility and for this project and where it's going.
Thank you. Uh, next to speak is Sarah Miller.
Hi, I live on Cloverver Road and I just wanted to say that I think that solar energy is a lot better than nuclear waste or greenhouse gases and I think that solar panels are nice to look at. So I, I think it's a good idea to put them there.
Thank you. Uh, next is possible Eric Lapp.
Yes, thanks. My name is Eric Lapp. I'm a resident of Rutland City, almost Rutland Town, but I'm an adjacent landlord to a proposed one megawatt project in the northwest neighborhood of Rutland City called the Charter Hill Project. Um, I don't have any direct interest in this project, but I really wanted to make a couple comments from a sort of a regional perspective as you mentioned. It's, I think it would be good to have sort of a coordinated approach, which isn't happening today through the local or regional or state bodies that kind of look more carefully at the aesthetic component. I worked for the Act of Review Commission back in 1988, 1987, and at that time there was a very rigorous review in solar panels and many projects weren't even on the radar at that time. But I think a lot of the criteria that the PSB uses are kind of outdated, going back to old projects that sort of set the laws at that time in place. What we have now kind of is a solar sprawl going on where the city of Rutland seems to consider this kind of a blood drive contest to see how much solar we can get anywhere for any reason. And it seems to me that the PSB process seems to be rubber skimping projects at a much faster rate than considering the other environmental impacts of the solar projects. So basically that's kind of echoing some of the comments other speakers made. Slowing the process down a little bit, kind of getting the regional perspective, in my opinion, would be a good way to consider solar development in the larger regional context. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next is Paul Gallows.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Okay. Uh, and Tom Hurox.
Horox.
Horox.
I'm Tom Horox. I am a Rutland Town resident, uh, born and raised in Colorado and I'm kind of the envy of all my friends in Colorado because, uh, they would happily swap with me at some of the public service board meetings that they go to concerning fracking that's going on out there. So, uh, I think we're very fortunate here in Vermont and in Rutland that this is pretty much local control for the most part. Some of the things that I want to say on solar, um, I believe it's an outstanding source of renewable energy. If I look at whatever other sources are out there, uh, like my friends in Colorado, what they're dealing with with fracking, uh, natural gas, they have to live with the long-term impacts of that. I see our long-term impacts of solar as incredibly minimal. This site is zoned industrial. If I lived next to this site, I don't, but if I did, I'd much rather see a solar farm than a warehouse, concrete plant, gravel pit, something that's going to bring a lot of traffic in and out. I think on the flip side, it's going to improve values, not only for the local area, but also have a positive impact on, uh, business and job creation in this area. Uh, and finally, I think one of the most positive impacts that we have with solar in our community is the educational impacts. I mean, I look around the room and I look at the age of all of us in here and I'm 47 years old and I feel like I'm one of the youngest ones in here. And I have two kids in Rutland Town School and what do I want to leave them with? And I'm very fortunate, just came from a parent teacher conference two hours ago and my kindergartner's learning about green energy. So I look at the impacts that it's going to have on her life as she grows, grows up.
A solar powered school.
Solar powered school, which I was on the committee that approved that. So I think it's positive impacts. However, I do have to say, if I lived next to the area and looked down on it, I would say that one of the negative impacts would be the visual. You know? Could I live there? Certainly could. Uh, if CBP or, uh, Green Mountain Power wanted to put solar panels in their rideaway, which is right next door to me, I'd be all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next would be Bima Nita.
Yes, thank you. Uh, my name is Bima. I'm the owner of Power Guru Renewables. Uh, we're a Southern Vermont installer of solar PV. Um, I'm going to just speak a little about the bigger picture items. I think that some folks have touched on them, but nobody has addressed the gorilla in the room and we're talking about climate change. And to address that issue, the state of Vermont has, uh, come up with this 80% by 2050 goal. 80% renewables by 2050, gentlemen. This is a very, very challenging goal. What we have going for us is for the first time ever, solar is now cheaper than the grid. Five years ago, when I was installing solar, we were doing it for $6 a watt. Now it's $3 a watt. Equates to around 12 cents a kilowatt hour. They're all paying about 15, 16 cents a kilowatt hour residential. So what you can do, what this means is if folks want to do it, you know, the, the utilities don't have to buy power from, you know, uh, hundreds of miles away from dirty polluting station, generation stations. Incat step up, step down, transformer losses, transmission, distribution losses, all of that to get power to you for more than you can get from solar. So this is a unique time. This is, this is where we should step up and say, let's do it. Let's embrace this technology. Let's, uh, create bylaws and, you know, regulations that encourage solar then rather than throw barriers at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Don Chapi. Chapi, I'm sorry. Chapi.
Mr. Sinclair, if there are other people after me that are citizens, I'd rather let them go first.
Okay, great. James Stewart.
Hi, I'm Jamie Stewart. I'm the executive director at Rutland Economic Development Corporation and probably more importantly, and I think this was characterized in prior statement, we are the largest abutting landowner to the project and it's because Reddick was the developer of the Cold River Industrial Park in its initial development. The land that we own is in fact wetland, can't be developed. Uh, it's the adjacent part that is also wetland on this new parcel. For the last four years, I've been actively marketing that property because the town had designated it for industrial use. Uh, Reddick looks to the towns to define where we should be placing things and the town plan clearly defined this as industrial development land. Uh, it was particularly well-suited because it is also in close proximity to a utility switching station to allow for the connection to the grid. We still believe that that's the case. We are concerned with after the fact objections being raised to a property that was properly identified and properly sought to be developed. And as the abutting landowner, we continue to support that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think, uh, I think we've heard from everybody that signed up, so it's your turn now.
Say honorable members of the public service board, indeed also hearing officers. My name's Don Chapi and I've been a citizen and taxpayer in Rutland Town since 1970. Since that time, over 43 years ago, I've served my town as chairman of the Recreation Commission, building pools, parks, ballfields, as a select board member and chairman and approving malls and multimillion dollar projects, as a board civil authority member, sitting in judgment on hundreds of tax appeals, as a state representative in the Vermont House, and most importantly, as a 17-year middle school teacher of thousands of students in this town that I love so dearly. I'm presently a retired contractor and I'm clerk of the select ward in our town. And this is my chairman who's evaluating me now. I give you this introduction for one reason only. I've been privileged and honored by my fellow citizens and townspeople as I've been given their confidence to serve in all these positions. I say it very humbly, as I've been blessed by the confidence that they've shown and given me a chance to try and represent them. And that's the key to my remarks to you this evening. I am but one board member and I'm speaking on my own behalf. I take my responsibility of representing the more than 4,000 citizens of Rutland Town very seriously. And with all due respect to everyone who speaks here tonight, who has spoken here tonight, there are only five of us who have been elected to speak for the 4,000 citizens of our town who are not here tonight. If that 43 years of service to my community means anything, it certainly means to me that over that long period of time, I've come to know, respect and understand a vast majority of my fellow citizens well enough to convey their collective thoughts on serious issues such as we are discussing tonight. The development and land use planning of any community, certainly ours as well, has been vested for decades to the citizenry of that community and it is they who have for those decades decided what flavor, what ambiance, what view sheds and what balance of agricultural, commercial, industrial and residential development to achieve within their community. Reasonable regulation of all of these categories has always been at the heart of local control and has not only been encouraged, but it's been enhanced by wise state policies such as Act 250 and Act 248, which has been your privilege to fairly apply. Our community, Rutland Town, wishes to continue that tradition and that high responsibility. So when faced with a new emerging industry, renewable energy, we sought to do what any responsible governing body would do in the normal course of any development. Faced with the possibility of a completely changed landscape in our town, we sought out reasonable regulatory language and provisions for development of this industry that we felt would be compatible. felt would be compatible with our citizens' desires while also attempting to meet the new industry's needs. We asked our administrator, Joe Zengali, to research the topic and provide us with a baseline document, if such was available, that we could modify and adopt as quickly as possible to meet a timeline that was accelerating faster than proper planning should allow. He did this and he presented us with a document from the Town and Wakes Board. Within a two-week period, we made some initial changes and deletions to the document and adopted it immediately as a non-regulatory administrative tool, which we could then offer to you, the PSB, as our town's collective input to your regulatory process, and that was entered by our town attorney in the intervening stage of your docket. Following that, we submitted the document, the solar siting facility standards for the Rutland Town, for the Town of Rutland, to our Planning Commission for their consideration for adoption as a town plan amendment. We are at present in the middle of that process, with two hearings having been held, and the select board is now in deliberation and working mode on that document. We offered the draft of the Planning Commission document in its present state, along with testimony to the Senate Natural Resources Committee on Bill S-91 by Senator Kevin Mullen, which I presented on behalf of my board and our town on Thursday, March thirteenth, a copy of which I'm leaving with you this evening. Rutland Town does not oppose solar energy, nor its inclusion in the mix of renewable resources for the benefit of our citizenry. What we do oppose is the thought that any one entity, be it Green Mountain Power, Grow Solar, Rutland Economic Development, or with all due respect, even the PSB, should have the right to unilaterally determine what our town should look like and what the view sheds of our residential development should be. In that regard, I'm absolutely sure that an overwhelming majority of our townspeople do not want industrial solar along every byway and highway near and adjacent to their neighborhoods. Indeed, adhering to reasonable standards developed by our community as part of a planning process has been the hallmark of both local control and planning policy which have made Vermont the pride of all our citizenry and the envy of the entire country. For sure, there's a place for industrial solar. As sure as I am of that statement, I'm equally sure that it certainly is not the right of the industry to determine where and how that happens. With a clear and specific set of solar facility siting standards, which we have provided to you, we are certain that we have met the parameters of the coici analysis in developing clear guidelines duly adopted by a legitimate vote of the only body elected by our citizens to do so. In closing, I'd like to sadly tell my fellow citizens that Rutland Renewable Energy has opposed even the rights of Rutland Town to intervene and enter its own siting standards to the docket in the case. And I have a lot of respect for the industry, but it's very difficult for me to understand, and I quote their concluding statement in their filing, "For the reasons stated above, our REs that the town's solar facility siting standards be excluded from this proceeding and that the board limit the town's intervention to exclude the project's potential impacts on historic sites, agricultural soils, and the natural environment." If this statement alone doesn't indicate how much power and control over our community the industry seeks to impose through your board, I don't know what could better state it. We oppose any industry having this much power over our four thousand citizens in a representative democracy. It is, after all, our town. Thank you, honorable members of the board. Godspeed and jurisprudence in your deliberations on this matter. Of the three letters in your name, I sincerely hope that you, as I do, value the first one the most.
Thank you. We have one more person who signed up and I think we've got the time to allow for a late sign-up, so Dana Peterson.
Thank you. Excuse me. I'll stand up. It was not my intent to come and speak this evening, but I do have to share something that has spoken to me as an educator. I am a lifelong educator. I am currently the principal of Woodstock Union Middle School and I've been a resident for over twenty years in Rutland Town. I have spoken at many of the meetings that have been convened, both select board meetings and the Town Planning Commission meetings. When the siting standards were originally proposed, I got a copy of them and I looped them over and I spent a lot of time, and some of you have already heard this, so I do beg your indulgence so I can say the same thing to the Public Service Board in front of us, that there were, I spend a lot of time as an administrator, sixteen years over in Woodstock and one year previously here, working on policies, procedures, and regulations. And as a school administrator and as an educator, it's really important to send clear signals to everybody and that we have to incorporate all aspects and perspectives into our decision-making process. As a result of seeing the original siting standards, I was appalled at the mishmash of the siting standards. I presented that at the, at the meeting of the Town Planning Commission and expressed my concern. I was invited to perhaps rewrite them. I said, I don't have time for this, but thank you for entrusting me to be able to do that. But I did have some feedback. I mentioned that, I said that I had no interest in this particular project. I was only interested in siting standards so that we could have a set of guidelines moving forward that could be followed predictably, reliably, with an emphasis on health and safety. I spoke before the select board and said the same thing. I was once again encouraged to perhaps, you know, give my input in my standards and I said, I really didn't have time for it. At the third meeting that I attended, I was encouraged perhaps that if a vacancy opened on the Planning Commission, that I should apply. I said I would take that under consideration, but I wasn't so inclined. I did spend most of the February break from school writing, rewriting some solar standards with some input from folks who were more knowledgeable than I in the area of some standards, environmental issues, and just a global view of what we were trying to address with no interest in this project at all. So I really don't have any interest in this project at all. But Don Chaffey was one of the ones who actually encouraged me and prompted me to run for the, or to be appointed, to put an application to be appointed to the, to the Planning Commission. As a result of the work that I did with some other folks, I submitted what I thought should be siting standards, or at least things to consider, at a, at a select board meeting. I was then encouraged to come back to a Planning Commission meeting and I was asked why I didn't bring those up before. And I said, it was never my intent to get involved in a struggle between members of the town. I simply wanted to help educate. That's my goal. I said a lot of other things, but I did present a document that actually took those standards and consolidated them into probably four pages down from the twenty pages of solar that were originally presented and that were mishmashing all over the place. One of the things that I pulled out was that I thought that the setback standards were arbitrary and not necessarily in the best interest of townspeople or the industry. I'm not an expert, but I was looking at it from a holistic perspective. I do believe that it's important to get, to involve landscape architects and to be able to create an atmosphere in which solar development can happen. And I agree with some of the other folks who have already commented before me, but there's a good way to do it and a not-so-good way to do it. There may be things about zoning, which we do not have in the town. There may be a lot of considerations that have to go into how and where we decide where those standards are. But you need to have a really well-thought-out set of developed standards ahead of time to be able to actually follow them predictably, reliably, with a focus on health and safety. Last night, apparently, I was appalled today, I am now on the Planning Commission.
Congratulations.
Thanks. I'm not sure that that's the case. However, I do believe that it is really important to make sure that we're setting standards that are appropriate and that everybody can operate by. I am a little dismayed at the number of different approaches that people are taking, both from one side and the other, to actually decide whether this is the right place or not the right place. I think that we need to come up with some standards that we can agree on as a community first, and I'm not sure that the standards that went through the Planning Commission and went to the, to the select board were the right standards, well-vetted, and well-thought-out. I'm now on the Planning Commission, so I better put my money where my mouth is and actually do the work to make sure that those standards are actually, that are actually viable and something we can use in our community for setting the parameters around which solar installation occurs. That's all I have to say. I am not for or against this particular project, but I do think that there's a right way to do the projects, but there's also a right way to do the documentation and set the policies and procedures that you're gonna follow that will make it clear to everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who didn't sign up who has nerves to comment? Can you give us your first name and surname?
Paul Clifford, Forty-four Hillside Terrace, Rutland Town. Fifty-year resident of the city. I've been in the town for the last six years. I just like to say I think we're going too fast. I really don't like what I'm seeing living in the town as far as this site, seeing things that are happening in the city like Mr. Cohen mentioned regarding one McDonald's and the one at Hillside Road. I just think we're going too fast. I drive all over the state for my job, from Polino to Troy, and I see in the past five to seven years, these farms popping up left and right. And it takes, for me, it takes the beauty and the aesthetics away from the state that I love. I think we're going too fast and I think we need to really listen to the people that live in these areas and get a good perspective of, you know, what they have to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, can you announce your name and?
My name is Kevin Keefavor. I lived, I lived in the town for twenty-some years. I now live in the city. I, I had the same reaction that Dana had to the guidelines that were originally put forth. I'm not sure what the status is of those guidelines, but they were very vague. I know in the twenty-some years that I've lived here, we've made moves towards zoning ordinances and they've always been voted down or eliminated. And I think that the fact that, I think they've done their due diligence and I don't think we should make it harder and harder for people to, to put in solar permits because frankly, folks, our environment is changing and it's changing really fast. And if we don't do something different, we're gonna continue to have weird weather and it's gonna get worse. And the sooner we do something to change that, the better. And we're gonna make some mistakes at the beginning, but, you know, we learn from them and we move on. I think this is a good project and I, frankly, the, the solar farm on Hillside Terrace is mine. It's a community farm and there are fifty people who invested in it and I'm one of those fifty. And you may think it's ugly, but I think it's gorgeous. I think it's really beautiful that my energy is coming from that thing, from the sun, instead of some plant that's burning coal or burning fracked gas from someplace out in Colorado or Pennsylvania where people are having to deal with flames coming out of their faucet, you know? Solar farms are a whole lot better than the alternatives and I think we need to move forward.
Thank you. One more comment here. Can you announce your name again?
Yeah. My name is Norman Khan. I just wanted to add one thing about site visits. And I, I shared your views about, and your views about the importance of solar energy. I just don't think this is the right place for it. But if you have the opportunity to ride north on Route Seven towards Virginus and you can come over the hill on the left side of the road ahead of you, you will see a solar farm and will get some idea of what Mr. Fucci and his neighbors are complaining about. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I think we'll wrap tonight's public hearing. Thanks for coming. We heard you loud and clear and if you want to be more involved, please look at our HAD of U cells. Thank you.